Council come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Brandon Horst.
Here.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Phil Strayland.
Here.
The city council has adopted a code of civility as elected officials. We pledge to promote civility through extending respect to others, listening to understand, disagreeing without disrespect, engaging collaboratively, and speaking up for, up to address incivility. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcasted for Pella TV. So when we get to public comment sections, I would ask that you please come forward to that microphone. Make sure you speak into that microphone so that people that are listening or watching at home can hear what you have to say. It's all important. The other thing is, tonight we have ten public hearings. There's a lot of rezoning requests along with, let's see, what was the other public hearing regarding church demolition? So if you are here to speak on either any of the rezoning issues or that, I would just like you to wait till we get to that public hearing because there's a, there's a time in each of those that you can comment about that subject. And I've got a feeling we have a lot of other subjects people may want to talk about tonight. So if you're here to talk about rezoning, those kind of things, if you could wait till we do the public hearing for that particular subject, that'd be great so we can move the meeting along. All right? So I will entertain a motion for approval of the tentative agenda.
So moved.
For.
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Phil Strayland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. So tonight I have the distinct privilege of swearing in a new police officer for the city of Pella, so Bailey, you'd like to join me up here. It's always exciting when we get to take the oath of office for a new member of our police force. So thank you for your interest in Pella and for being part of our police force. So there's an oath of office that you need to take, so I'll just let you read it off of there. But you need to raise your right hand and as you do that, so if you want to go ahead.
I, Bailey Canals, loosely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the office of police officer in the city of Pella, county of Marion, state of Iowa, as now and hereafter required by law.
So congratulations and welcome. Welcome Bailey. All right, we'll move on to some reappointments and some appointments for some of our committee members. We had a fair amount of people here. It's a big family if that's all, family and friends. Okay, moving on, I would like to reappoint Amanda Swerfiger to the community services board. Amanda has served on this board since 2016. She attended twenty-three of the twenty-five meetings held during her most recent term. If approved, Amanda's new three-year term would expire on January one, 2028. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For.
Ms. Strayland, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Ms. Strayland.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brandon Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Phil Strayland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brandon Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Phil Strayland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brandon Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Phil Strayland.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Stephen Fife to the community service board. Stephen has served on this board since twenty, or 2007. He attended fourteen of the twenty-five meetings held during his most recent term. If approved, Stephen's new three-year term would expire on January one, 2028. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Was that Hopkins?
Yeah.
Brandon Horst? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Brandon Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Phil Strayland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. At this time, we have opportunity for public forum, and we're wishing to address council regarding any agenda item. Please step forward with the microphone. As I said, state your name and address. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
I apologize if this is in one of the public hearings because I missed that part. Matt Van Gelder, 229 Main Street, Pella. I'm the current president of the Board of Trustees for the Pella Public Library, but I do not speak on behalf of the board or the library tonight. I just want to show my personal support for the Community Center renovation. Many organizations and groups like Crossroads, the Arts Center, Union Street Players, and the Pella Public Library utilize this space. The larger meeting rooms and auditoriums, auditorium are important resources that are difficult to find anywhere else in our community and make many of these programs possible. Moving forward with the proposed renovation would provide vital resources needed to continue these programs to adult and children of our community, as well as making it possible to offer additional resources to the community. Please consider voting yes for the proposed Community Center renovations. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Harley Van Zany, 1117 Big Rock Park Road. I'm here to speak on behalf of the friends of the Pella Community Center. Wanted to give you an update. We have raised something a little over 1.6 million towards the project at this time. That puts us, along with the Pella Rec Center, in a position that we can now fully fund the base plant, which at this point is estimated at 6.8 million. So with a fifty-five and a half million commitment, we're at 7.1. So we're in a good position to do that. Based on that, I would encourage the board, the council here, to approve moving all the projects forward for bid. From the, for our project, that would mean that we could complete the detailed design, be in a position to start going for bid sometime late in the spring, maybe early in the summer. We need to know what the real costs are going to be, need to know what the final costs are. We will continue to fundraise towards the full renovation, but we are prepared to go with the base plan if that's what's necessary. So please give us your approval to do that. Any questions? We, I, I will be here if you have any questions during the discussion, and I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Jordan Pope, 700 Main Street. Speaking on behalf of the Union Street Players, I'm the current treasurer of Union Street Players. Speaking on behalf of support of the renovations to the Community Center, to give you a little outlook on how much people utilize the Community Center even just through Union Street Players. Over the past twelve months, over 3,000 people attended our shows. Over 120 kids participated in drama camp, and all of these type of events that we're able to produce and have in the community is specifically due to our ability to use the auditorium and have the Community Center available to us. The renovations and improvements to it would be crucial to us to be able to continue to provide those opportunities to people. Over a hundred different individuals took place and were involved in our productions over the past year. Most recently with My Fair Lady just ending just on Sunday, and over 1,034 people attended that show as well, and there was over 50 people involved in the casting crew. So the Community Center is beneficial to Union Street Players, and having the community theater available in Pella is certainly beneficial to the community. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Tyler Smith. I live 710 Northeast Seventh Street in Ankeny. I am also a member at large for the Board of Directors of Union Street Players, and as an Iowa transplant, moving from Portland about seven years ago, Union Street Players was my in in Tupela. And even after moving away, I still feel a draw to come back to this community. I would hope that the council here approves the recommended budget proposal to not only encourage children, as my fellow board member so aptly put, but to also give an opportunity to individuals that are new to the community, myself included. It's hard to find friends as an adult. Union Street Players was a great place to do that, and it gave me a solid home in Pella. And that was the very base of my feeling welcome here. So I implore you to approve.
Okay, anyone else? All right, then we will move into a discussion about the long-term facility plan. I believe we're going to start with a discussion about the Rec Center and then move to a discussion about the Community Center. Remember, the object of our discussion tonight is to give staff direction on, at this point, all we're talking about doing is going to the bid phase of the projects so that we have actual numbers so we can discuss the details later as we move through that process. But Mike, go ahead and lead us through our discussion.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to do so, and I'd like to direct those members in attendance who are watching at home on Pella Fiber to the big board for a presentation on the side of this. Mayor awards stated what tonight's session is about is providing direction specifically whether we're going to include three projects for their associated with the long-term facility plan or to the construction bid phase, and that would be the proposed indoor recreation center that we have an estimated budget of just shy of $34 million. The associated, the infrastructure associated with University Street, that is right around seven and a half million, University Street extension, seven and a half million dollars, and the Community Center renovation project is full build of that, including the southeast wing additions at three and a half million dollars. It's important to note that we're going to be seeking individual bid, I'd say, direction of individual projects tonight, and once we get through each segment of direction, we're going to be first, followed by the community, followed by the infrastructure component, followed by the Community Center. Once we get done with all three, we'll circle back. And specifically when we talk about direction, just so what council staff is looking for is, in our minds, from staff, and what we have recommended, the council's part of determining move forward, is if four council members support the project, and also if the mayor supports the project, then staff will initiate the construction bid project and bid process for that project. Okay? All right, let's go ahead, Mandy. Now, starting on the, on this, and how we got to here, it's good, and the council's familiar with this, but let's talk about the parameters that we established in July of this year for both, all three of these projects. First item that we had is we have ourselves until December of this year to make a decision on whether to proceed with the construction bid process for these projects. And then it's also important to note that we talked about the final design of these projects, and since they're still in engineering design phase of it, council will have to finally say so on the design of the projects and what's included in that, and that will be determined through the construction bid process if we proceed with those projects. Now financially for the city, what we've identified, and actually, these have been the numbers that the city has talked about as part of contributing to the facility plan since April 2022. City cash contributions are right at five and a half million dollars, and then we've also talked about issuing a local occupancy services tax line up to a limit of $17 million. So $22.5 million is what we've established for both the Rec Center and the Community Center. Now, as far as the infrastructure that we'll be going over this evening, we identified a preliminary budgetary estimate of $6.6 million. Now, as far as six and seven are concerned, these are very important items, and we're going to be going into detail as they are on the presentation on this, but what we established earlier in July of this year is that private pledges and there's a significant amount of private pledges for both of these projects, they need to be financed by a non-city appellent entity. So we're going to explain that as we get through the presentation this evening. As far as property taxes on an operating basis, as far as the operations of it, we basically had that the properties cannot increase or if required enhance operating subsidy. So for the Rec Center, it needed to be planned on a revenue neutral basis, the Community Center project could not increase the city's operating subsidy for that project as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. It is important to note, the reason we established financial parameters is not only this last year, but for the last several years, there's been property tax legislation in the state of Iowa, and basically the takeaway on this is it's limited or reduce the city's annual property tax growth. What that means is we have to be efficient in our operations to make decisions on it, and oftentimes with that involvement, city government is making decisions on what we would call, I'd say, quality of life projects on this as well, and what we're talking about this evening. It is also important to note, and I would like to preface my comments, when we start planning for the next budget here, which staff is currently underway as far as the next fiscal year, we are looking at a projected operating deficit to start out with a general fund of $368,000, while it's not uncommon to have a deficit in the general funding to start the budget preparations. It is larger than what we're usually seeing on that as well. That's the combination of the state property tax legislation, plus over the past few, three years, actually, we've also taken on the Pella ambulance, which is an essential service. They provide an excellent service to our community, but we've adopted that service into our operations as well. And so we're still in the process of rightsizing that and determining appropriate, I'd say, contribution from the city of Pella on it, and this council can attest, we'll be talking about the ambulance this evening. So those are the two main factors when we talk about the general fund deficit that we are facing this year as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, one of the key items that we're going to be talking about this evening is proposed partnership agreements for both the Community Center and the city's proposed indoor recreation center. And where these partnerships are structured is they're going to be very similar to what we're proposing proposed as what we did to the Pella Sports Park. Through their agreements, if you're looking at those partnerships, the city established mining maximum city financial contributions through contracts for the Pella Sports Park. And then we also had a requirement through those contracts when we looked at private funds being raised for the Pella Sports Park, that actually deals the future in that, that agreement was responsible for the financing and risk loss of private pledges. Tonight, we're going to be talking about private pledges and contributions from other entities upwards to the tunes of about $20 million. So when we talk about both partnership agreements for both the Community Center and the Recreation Center, this is going to be one of the key items because it's really a lot of this to proceed with both of these projects and actually discuss seeking bids for both of these projects. Aside of the, both partnerships that we have this evening, what the city would likely have to rely on is actually receiving the cash from the private pledges before going out to bid on the project. So it's really accelerated the projects, and it's also transferred and shared the risk associated with structure of these projects as well. So this is going to be one of the key items that we're going to talk about this evening. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the plan itself, it is important to note that we do have a balanced plan that we are presenting this evening from a construction standpoint. We have total revenue sources, and we have an idealized breakdown for this up here of just over $50 million associated with this plan, as well as estimated cost of just over $50 million is, as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, the first project that we have this evening is the Pella Rec Center, and at the conclusion of the presentation on the Rec Center, we're going to be requesting direction on this project. So if I move too fast this evening, please make sure to ask questions as we go, slow me down, whatever we need to do, but we want to make sure that we get good information out on it. So what we have this evening, start off with, this is the exterior color elevations of the facility. We had a outside group that pointed that this is the city of the design of the facility, and our architect Hattery actually came up with the design that was based off input from ad hoc committee that helped the city with this design. So, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the development concept, the proposed location for the indoor recreation center is actually located in the northwest corner of the Pella Sports Park. As a part of this, we were planning to extend University Street to 240th Avenue out to 250th Avenue as well. But as you can see on the eastern side of our community, this is located near several major entities, public schools, public Christian schools, Layley and the Mirror Corporation as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the site plan that we have, one of the more common questions that we have is there are parking for the recreation center, and also be able to, the additional parking that's needed for the Pella Sports Complex. We believe we do have that as well. And if there's any questions on the details on the number of parking spaces or any other of the details with the recreation center, our architects are actually, our architects and engineers will shine hattery our tenants this evening. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, let me explain how we're proposing both of the recreation center and the community center to actually bid these projects. We're going to be utilizing what's called a base plan plus season alternate bids. And for those in attendance who explained, and I know the council's familiar with this, but with the base plan, what that tells contractors that are going to bid on these projects is the city is committing at a minimum to do this minimum amount. If the bids come in really good or out of page to the city, or if we have additional revenue on this, we may be able to add additional components. So when we talk about the recreation center, the base plan where everything will be factored off, that is what's pictured up here, and the estimated cost of the base plan ranges from $32.7 million up to $35.7 million. And as you can see, it's just shy of 64,000 square feet. The base plan includes is a competition swimming pool, an indoor turf area, two full-size basketball gymnasiums, a walking track, workout facilities, meeting rooms, and numerous other amenities for the recreation center. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, this is the full plan, it's what most people are used to seeing when we talk about the recreation center. And once again, we're going to get bid items on all these components on it, and council will be able to decide at the bid lighting if a project proceeds, which components will actually be funded. So some of these decisions are going to be deferred until you have actual hard, hard bid numbers of construction costs for each one of these amenities, but the full plan has just been differentiated to the base plan. Instead of an indoor turf area, we have our second pool, which will be a recreation pool, which will be a warm water pool, an area for water aerobics, also another play area, slide, and then we have a resistance track that will be located up here as well. In addition, the difference between this and the base plan is we have two more additional gymnasiums as well for, for the recreation center. And the risk, I didn't say that included in the plan is indoor walking track as well. The estimated cost of the full plan ranges from $40.6 million up to $44.5 million on it, and it's just over $78,000 per feet. Now, just for discussion purposes, what we have this evening, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. We call this the mid-plan, and there's options out there that are more than just these three that we have. The mid-plan would be four gymnasiums, a turf field, and a competition swimming pool. The direct process estimates on that ranging from $37.6 million up to $41 million. Once again, we have a $78,000 square foot facility. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the parameters, if you're called financial parameters that extended to life of these projects, and specifically how it applies to the proposed indoor recreation center, what we're looking at, what we have tentative budget this evening is just shy of $34.9 million. And if you wanted to look at this, the city would be contributing $17 million, and we actually have $16.9 million from other parties as far as the overall cost of the facility. So it's about 50/50 as far as city contributions and other parties contribute to this facility. Now, as far as proposed partnership, what's being proposed is an agreement, Pella Recreation Center, and Pella Recreation Center will be responsible for the outstanding pledges on the project, which is roughly $15.6 million. So what would happen is if council decided to go out with a construction bid on this project, we would also work on a partnership agreement, Pella Recreation Center, where Pella Recreation Center would be contributing $15.6 million to the project. Staff would examine the pledges and also the credit on where they're financing the money or how they're putting up the financing plan. That would all be presented to council in a summary form with partnership proposed to the city council, but that should be a separate agreement. Pella Rec would be contributing $15.6 million, the financing of private pledges, as well as the risk of loss on those pledges as well. Before I go on, I'd like to say we're super fortunate in this community to have the amount of funds raised for both of these projects. Overall, when we look at the Rec Center, you may be asking yourself, well, if we had $16.9 here, why do we finance $15.6? The truth of the matter is, we, well, we received almost $1.3 million in pledge payments on this project as well. So what would happen, the remaining outstanding pledges would be financed by Pella Rec. Now, as far as the operations for the recreation center, it is important to note that we had feasibility study that was performed by Valerie King on the facility, and actually, we looked at five different operational models as part of this, just due to the number of options and amenities that are being proposed. We did throughout this process. Generally, when you look at the preliminary operating subsidy, factoring in closure of the city's indoor pool, all of them were fairly consistent right around these numbers that we have here. So this $322,000, that would be the initial year in operation, but overall, if you were looking at five-year average, the, roughly, in this model that we have here, it was about $13,000 as far as the subsidy. What I would also say for council is to be clear, all these models were based off the city operating the facility as well. If the project moves forward, we'll be looking at other operating models as well for this project, and there may be additional enhancements that we can have for to reduce that subsidy as well. So from a staff standpoint, when you talk about the operating, that's an item until council makes a decision that could be somewhat of the moving target until we make a decision on what we're actually looking to build. It's kind of the moving target up until that, that point. But we want to also make clear that we, this is based off the feasibility study. There are options that we could explore and potentially reduce its operating subsidy as well. But if it did proceed, and if we built the recreation center, and it did require a subsidy somewhere between $13,000 and $322,000, we would be looking at projected increase in the city's operating level, anywhere from $0.31 up to $47,000. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as overall, our private revenues and project expenditures, again, have a budget that just ran around $33.9 million. This is the contributions that we have up here to itemize it. And once again, this would be a contract, Pella Recreation, Pella Rec, excuse me, of $15.6 million would be their contribution that would be approved through a contract with the city proxy as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. No other items to consider in making the decision whether to seek construction bids for the recreation center as of date. We've had project expenditures just over, just shy of $186,000. The estimated cost to seek bids on the project is an additional $140,000 in architectural and engineering fees on it. Now, if we were to seek bids on this, on a bid timing, the timeline of the project would be, if we believe that bid lighting could occur somewhere right around February, March of next year, most likely that would be presented for council to make a decision on the project sometime in March, potentially early April of next year as well. Council would proceed with the project and set the construction bid at that date. We would plan construction on the project from the summer of 2025 all the way through the summer of 2027. The facility projected opening date would be the fall of 2027. Now, as far as other information to consider, mayor award has stated that we have secured pledges to finance, actually pay for the $140,000 cost to seek bids on this, so that is a separate pledge that we have secured, the mayor has secured for the project as well. We also want to make sure, and it is known by council, maybe those in attendance, council is aware of this, that we've actually adopted and conducted in addition to the feasibility study, we've actually conducted two economic impact studies on the recreation center. The first one was based off of the full build of the facility, and it looked at what is the economic impact to the community apart from conducting the tournaments at the recreation center. If you're called a full build, have four gymnasiums and a competition swimming pool, and those would be the main amenities that would draw events and tournaments to the community. Valerie King looked at roughly thirty events that would be, would be conducted at the facility during the year on that, and they estimated that the annual economic impact to the community would be $4.9 million. And this is something that we see with quality of life projects quite frequently at the city of Pella. City of Pella oftentimes, when you have, operate- City of Pelos oftentimes, when you have operational, or if you have quality of life projects, they mean a lot to the community. There's a lot of value to the community as a whole, but often financially, if you can wing pencil things out directly, a lot of the required operating subsidies, but when you look at the greater pool and what it generates as far as economic impacts to the community, it is fairly significant for them as well. We also looked at the impacts of the G to do an economic analysis, what is the economic analysis or impact to the community by building the recreation center as well as the University Street extension project. What they estimated is one-time economic impact to Marion County would be just over sixty-three million dollars, and during the course of construction for both projects would be roughly three hundred and eighty jobs in the community as well. Now, one other item that we'd like to point out to council, and we haven't talked somewhat about this in the past, but we want to make sure that we consider everything on this, that if we don't proceed with the recreation center, it is important to note that the age of the current indoor pool, the facility, I believe was built in the late seventies on it, and we performed an extensive renovation of the facility in two thousand and fourteen, but it wouldn't be imperative that we invest significant funds to extend the life of the current indoor pool if we don't proceed with the competition swimming pool or the pool option for the recreation center. The other item that we do, just like the emphasis of council on it, and I think this is just significant for the community, and I'm really proud of our community and the work that we're fundraising groups, I think there's been a significant amount of funding that has been raised for both of these projects, and we feel really fortunate, city administration, that we've had people willing to invest this amount in our community. Not only any investment, but the time and effort it's taken to raise those funds, so we'd like to say thank you to the group that raised the funds, in this case Pelos Rec on this as well. So, from our standpoint, that's a significant item for council's consideration. So, let's go ahead. Before we get to the decisions, is there any questions for myself up to this point? And I may defer this portion to the mayor.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mike. Great presentation as usual. So, a couple of things I want to explain before, basically, I'm going to go down the road and ask everyone if you're willing to move the bid, move to the bid process, and I want to remind us that that's all we're doing tonight. We're not committing to anything. We're moving to the bid process. We give Mike and staff the okay if the council, as you saw on the first screen, I have to approve it, and four of you have to approve it. And that's all we're doing tonight is giving Mike permission to go out and get the bids, to seek the bids so that we have a number. So, obviously, I'm certainly in favor of moving to the bid stage of this process. The other thing I wanted to mention in there, talked about the hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, as I, as we were preparing to go here, obviously, there's some obstacles that get in the way of doing things, and so I thought maybe we should try to address, address an obstacle before it happens. So, if you know, if you remember in the presentation, we've already collected just a little bit under one point three million dollars for this project identified specifically given to the city of Pelos for the Rec Center. Every dime of that is in the bank account earning interest. It's the city of Pelos' funds at this point. If we decide, if we don't move forward with the project eventually, if we don't move forward at any time, we don't move forward the project, then we have to figure out what to do with that. That's money that's already been given to the city of Pelos. We'd have to go back to all the donors and, and, you know, find out. I don't really know the answer to that question. We'd have to cross that bridge when we get there. But this hundred and forty thou, so I have a check right here for a hundred and forty thousand dollars that will cover the cost to go to bid. This is part of Pelos Corporation's pledge to the city. They pledged six million dollars. But the difference is, we're going to cash this check. We're going to cash this check tomorrow so that Mike can use it to pay the hundred and forty thousand dollars to Shai Hattery to go through the bid process. And if we do not move the project forward eventually, this money stays, is spent and gone. Pelos Corporation does not expect it back. So, to me, if you need more evidence of our two largest employers' commitment to this project, I ask you to consider that Vermeer is pledging six million dollars to this project. Pelos Corp is pledging six million dollars to this project. So, if you need more evidence than that, I've got more evidence. Number one, Vermeer Manufacturing went on their own and did some land swaps to allow us to have all willing right-of-way sellers for the highway, for the extension of University Street, because that was a potential obstacle. So, they took care of that for us, all on their own. Now, we have all of our seven point two acres, I think it is, we need for the right-of-way for the road. All of that is in the hands of willing sellers of the right-of-way. Pelos Corporation said a potential obstacle to not going to bid would be the hundred and forty thousand dollars. They've removed that. So, just for your consideration, tonight, if we, if you guys approve going to bid, it's at no risk to the city. None whatsoever, no further risk to the city. A hundred and forty is going to cover the cost to do it. We have every right to reject any and all bid that we get them. The numbers have to make sense, and I've said this all along. We will not try to build what we can before. So, when we get bids and we know the number, we will proceed from there. I might be the one that says we can't do it based on the bid numbers. I don't know that. I'm confident we will. But anyway, that's all we're doing tonight. And so, I felt like I needed to explain the hundred and forty thousand. Is there any questions about that? Does it make sense how that's different from the other one point three million that we already have? This is with no recourse. Probably would be, John, you're a CPA, you know what with no recourse means. This is a check that can be cashed tomorrow. The money can be used to go, to get through the bid process, so. So, I'm going to go down the line. You're free to say whether you support going to bid or not. You can say why or why not. That's entirely up to you. I'll give you as much time as you need.
So, Mark? I'm solidly in favor of going to bid and finally getting some numbers. I wish we didn't have to wait till March to get them moving.
Okay, Lev?
I am in support of going to bid, and I would also like to say thank you to Pelos Corp. Sometimes the hardest piece to swallow as a city government is that cost of going to bid, and so they made it very, very palatable and a very easy decision.
Dave?
Yep.
That's right, words. Best support? Harold?
I think we need bids. I have gotten a number of people that say we need gyms more than we need the aquatic center. I know we've got some swim people who are going to hate me when I say that, but I come from a community that has a really nice aquatic center. This community, Florida County South Dakota, they have about thirty thousand sessions. They had a lot of university support. They got a lot of money from the university, and they got a lot of money from the school. That was their advantage. They found out that it's very expensive to build a pool, and it was very expensive to supervise a pool, and it continues to be very expensive to maintain a pool. Like I said, I've had a number of people who say this community needs gyms, and if we build only two gyms, we get zero orders of gyms in this community if we close the gyms on the south end. So, in the bid process, we need more than two gyms. That is a big reservation that I have, but I certainly support. I guess we have to see what we're going to get for what it's going to cost to build. I have said this often. I don't like all of the bling of this design. My granddaughter has gone to a lot of competitions, and as I walked up to some of these, the designs have been very plain, but the insides have been very functional and practical. And this design, I think, it looks to me like too much money is spent on bling rather than functionality. That's the reservation I have with Shai. And I look at all of the hassles that Shai had with the Warren County Courthouse in Indian Home. So, that's my reservation with this situation. So, those are some of my reservations.
So, Harold, I would just respond by saying, hey, I appreciate your comments. I understand them all. But tonight, we're just talking about going to bid. We're going to have all of those discussions.
So, we have flexibility on simplifying design?
Yep. It's all going to be a matter of what we can afford, as I've said, to the mayor.
So, we have the option of pushing more gyms? Well, I think I said it.
Yeah, thank you for your support. John?
Well, last but not least, I support going to the bid, and I certainly do appreciate Pelos Corporation's generosity in putting the money out. That's, that's a very grand gesture, I think. So, and I, and I like the idea of getting bids on each project and a variety of configurations for those sports that are the rest of it. And so, yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate that from all of you. We'll get the, we'll get the numbers, and then we got to really work. So, okay, let's move on to our construction project.
Talk about the infrastructure this evening. And the infrastructure generally, and most people, it's associated with the University Street extension. Once again, it's playing the University Street extension. We have a map at the eastern side along with Pelos Rec Center, indoor recreation center. This is located in the northwest corner of the Pelos Sports Park. What's being proposed with the infrastructure is actually an extension of University Street. We're running terminals in two hundred and forty-first Avenue, so we're going to be planning to extend it all the way up to two hundred and fifty-first Avenue. But we're also planning on extending Baseline Drive to the north, so there will be a second entrance into the Pelos Sports Park, but University Street will likely be the primary entrance for most Pelos residents to the indoor recreation center as well. Also included in the project is, we'll have, there's also been talked, and we'll need to make sure we have it in there, as far as the bike trail extension associated with the project as well that we need to send out to the recreation center. And that would be a part of the design process as well. Let's go ahead, please. Talk a little bit about the finances, but what's being proposed on this is a general obligation bond, so this would be a central corporate services bond that we would have, and that would be just over six point seven, six point seven million dollars. That is higher than the estimate that we had back when we established the financial parameters in July at six point six million dollars. We've also secured a federal grant for the project of right around a million dollars that we have through the Department of Health on this as well. As far as the estimated cost, the University Street extension is just shy of four point eight million dollars. Baseline Drive is just shy of one point one million dollars. One of the benefits that we have with this project is also is Water Main extension on the project of just over seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. That is proposed, and it has the potential to increase fire flows for the southeast portion of our community as well. Now, the sanitary sewer, sewer system that's being proposed for both the Sports Park as well as the recreation center is just over right at one million and eighty-two thousand dollars. So, the project expenditures to date on, as far as the infrastructures, are just over one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And as far as the bond issue is concerned, as far as the city's potential debt service levy increase, we're still working on this. Mandy, if we can go back to the overall, not just one slide back for me on it, you'll see that we have a range of forty to fifty-two cents that we have on this project. Well, we, the reason why we have a range is this actually has a chance to be lower. If we're going to go ahead with this project, from a planning standpoint, what we would propose is that we establish an urban renewal area on the eastern side of our community that would capture both Baseline Drive as well as University Street. We could tie it into the existing Laylae campus urban renewal area, and it gets a little bit of its needs that we do have on this. But we would also look at in addition to University Street, capturing our new industrial development that we have out here as well. So, if you look at there, we're right out there, there's, these are all their farm grounds. So, as we build valuations on their industrial buildings, get built on this, we could capture the new valuations off those buildings and actually use them to support infrastructure on this project. I think it makes a lot of sense from a planning standpoint. If you recall, we said the Water Main has the potential of increasing fire flows on the southeast portion of our community. That's key for industrial development growth as well. So, some aspects that we have, the infrastructure project, will go beyond the Pelos Sports Park as well and the indoor recreation center. It is also important to note for council's consideration that the University Street extension has been in city's contract plan since two thousand and seven, and that creates both the Pelos Sports Park and both indoor recreation center as well. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Once again, we have the finances up here, and we're ranging up here somewhere between forty to fifty-two cents, but with it, if we were to proceed with urban renewal area, it has a chance to be lower than that as well. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the project timeline, council would choose to go to a bid lighting on this project. Could be April, May of next year. Construction would be the summer of twenty twenty-five through calendar year twenty-six. We believe the project will reopen as far as the University Street Baseline Drive probably in the spring of twenty twenty-seven on there as well. So, I believe that includes staff, free of page, and the mayor on the site if he'd like to handle this one as well.
Thank you, Mike. So, I, I would enthusiastically support this project. I think we've had many discussions about our current Sports Park, and accessibility is a real problem, getting in and out. The other thing that's key to this project would get that bike, that bike trail out there. Our kids right now cannot bike safely to our Sports Park, and I'd love to see kids being able to ride their bikes with a bike trail. We would widen it in front of the schools, and so we'll have a ten-foot bike trail all the way from, what's that street? Where is it? Pass the tennis courts there a little bit, where we put in the new street, we put in the new bike trail, so it'd go there all the way out to the Sports Park. So, we'd really only have about three locks maybe to hook up to the bike trail that goes all the way out to the lake. But anyway, we need, we need, this needs to get done. As I said, Vermeer has made it easier for us to acquire the right-of-way. We have willing sellers for all of the land we need for that, so I'm strongly in favor of moving it forward. So, I'll do the same thing and ask for support from you guys.
I support.
I support.
Yep.
Best support?
Andy?
Yes, sir.
All right, fabulous. Got an agreeable, agreeable group tonight. Let's go to the Vermeerly Center.
All right. Mayor, our last item that we have here is a proposed renovation of the community center. This project actually has two main components, renovation of the existing community center. Plus, what's being proposed is a wing addition that we have up here as well in the southeast portion of the community center. This is all based to further enhance accessibility for the facility. As far as the project budgets, we're going to be following a very similar plan that we had with Pelos, Pelos Indoor Recreation Center. We'll be utilizing a base bid for the project, so the base bid on this project will actually be just the renovation of the current facility, somewhere right around six point seven, six point eight million dollars. The wing addition, if we are to add that, that's where we did it, the eight and a half million dollars on the project as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Okay, as far as the overall project budget that we have here, what's being proposed is five and a half million dollars from the city plus three million dollars from Pelos. The others would be the friends of the Pelos Community Center, and they'd be responsible for a partnership agreement if we proceed with the full plan on this. So, this would be the eight and a half million dollars, the wing addition on this. Under that contract, the friends would be responsible for nearly three, three million dollars of financing of private pledges on it as well. If it's the base plan, what Mr. Van Zandt stated earlier this evening, the friends would actually be responsible for about one, just over one point three million dollars. Others with five and a half coming from the city on that as well. Now, as far as the operating subsidy that we've looked at, as currently the community center has an operating subsidy right around three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Staff believes if we proceed with this project, that we will not materially increase the operating subsidy if we build this. subsidy if we build this project. And the reason is, is currently as council is aware, we are paying a premium, a very high premium for property insurance on the facility. If we renovate the facility, it's our understanding that premium will come down, but we believe the increased operating cost mainly would be attributed through utilities from the wing addition, offsetting, offsetting insurance increase on the project as well. So that's based off our initial review. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the overall project is concerned, once again, this is for the full project, just shy of three point five million dollars. And the current annual subsidy for the community center is just shy of three hundred and sixty-five thousand. And the proposed operating subsidy, projected operating subsidy would stand at three sixty-five. So Mandy, let's go ahead with the other information to consider. To date, we've had project expenditures, just shy of a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars on the community center. The estimated cost to see construction bids is over three hundred and twelve thousand dollars on this. If we were to proceed with the construction bids on it, we believe that bid that could occur in June or July of twenty twenty-five. The construction on the facility would actually start in the fall of twenty twenty-five, would probably carry on most likely through two thousand and twenty-six. Schimer and Associates would probably have the more, higher timeframe for the renovation of the project that pays its existing renovation on it. We're giving ourselves a plenty of leeway. I think what occurred from them is officially twelve months for the renovation, but we're going through, for discussion purposes, through twenty twenty-six. We believe the facility would be open early in twenty twenty-seven as well. Some other items to consider on this, if we don't proceed with the project, it's simply the age of the current community center as well as the minimum improvements necessary to keep the community center open to the public as well. So there will be some investment if we don't proceed with this project on behalf of the, of the city, just to be able to maintain and keep the facility open to the public as well. So Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation, and once again, if you'd like to handle this portion.
Yeah. Mandy, can you go back a slide? Just for clarification, the project, a hundred and fifty-two thousand has been spent. The three twelve, I'm guessing that the, that's a higher cost because the plans are not as far along as the rest of the plan? Is that correct?
You are correct. They have to, they're, they're, they have a base bid on the rest of that.
Okay. So same, same procedure? Hey, I have to admit, I was a, I was a skeptic on this one early on, but Arvin and Patty have their passion for this project, have convinced me that this is a great project for our community, and I really like this latest, I really like this latest renovation. And so I will help you raise money to make sure we get enough to do the, do the additions. So I'm, I'm an enthusiastic supporter of this project. Mark?
Yes?
I'm at Lake Dawn. I have believed in this project since it came on board, which I believe was two thousand and seventeen, or maybe before then. I applaud you for raising as much as you have, and I also support you one hundred percent.
Yep. Man a few words.
I support.
Absolutely. Yes, that's for sure.
Okay. Thank you very much for that indulgence, and here's we can at least move to the next step. We have a ton of decisions left to be made later down the road on all these projects, but I think we're moving in the right direction. I personally, I think the time is right to do them. I think the, the response we've had from the community when it comes to fundraising is pretty phenomenal between the two projects. The amount of pledged money for these is something you want to see in two minutes. So I think the time is now to, to move them forward. So that's what we're gonna do. All right. So we're gonna move on to the rest of our agenda for the evening. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So?
For Mr. Ireland Hopkins, a discussion? Hey, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving into a public hearing regarding six oh nine East First Street Building Demolition Project Bids. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct everyone to attention to the big board for a review of the agenda beside us. And what we have this evening is the demolition bids that the city recently received for the second, former Second Christian Home Church property that's located in six oh nine East First Street. As you can see, we had a lot of interest in the project, the low bidder, the bids range from a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars all the way up to three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Now, the good news for the city, all of them were below the engineer's estimate of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So after reviewing this bid, our engineers on the project, which is being strengthened, are recommending awarding the contractor's role as responsible for the bid bidder, which is D W with the Zinser on it. Now, council voted to approve this project. We believe the demolition would be complete by June of twenty twenty-five, and we are recommending approval this evening on the project. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation this evening.
Okay. Mandy, any written comments received?
No written comments.
Council comments?
The spread between engineers' opinion and vote of bid is scary.
Yeah.
Sure is in our favor.
It sure is in our favor. That's a good job.
Huge savings. Any explanation, Denny?
References are excellent.
Go to the mic, go to the mic, please. There's a lot of people out there, just wanna hear what you have to say.
Yeah, in, in all honesty, the engineers, there's been engineers estimated over the last year or four years, and not everybody had our time. It's not every day everybody tears down a big shell of a church that also has asbestos issues. So everybody kept rounding up. I was in on that. Zins are, it's great to see they got it, they're in the business, this is what they do every day. They're equipped to do both all ends of it. So they hope to start after the holidays and get her, get her out of there and get the whole fields.
So just for clarification, Mike, we do have one local contractor that's in the bid, but by COVID, we're required to take the lowest bid. I'm actually gonna plug that. Why don't you always tell the rest of the council?
Yeah, so there's a threshold amount in which when you have to go to bid on certain things, and you have to take the lowest responder responsible with it, and so that's what the city is often met with is unless you can eliminate that on other grounds, it sounds like pretty hard.
All right. Any, anything else, council, question? All right. Any member of the audience want to speak on this subject? If you do, please come forward to the microphone.
Going on two five oh nine Skolkis Drakas. Pleasure to see those bids come in so low, but nevertheless, I don't think that we have any known plans for that area. I've heard discussions of different things, but nothing planned. So the expenditure of even the low bid is still very questionable, specifically since we're planning the operating budget deficit this year. And so this would reduce that, and if we come up with a need for the area, well, then perhaps we can go and tear the building down at a later date. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still?
Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussion? Hey, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Rader?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Van Zandt?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did you pass a Maya comment point?
I'm sorry?
On, on a long-term facility plan?
Oh, you have something you wanna add to the long-term facility plan?
Yeah, I have some presentation.
Okay, yeah, I just, I said you guys can say whatever you want to say. I'm sorry.
All right. Well, okay.
So you wanna, you wanna run that? Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. I wanted to, Mandy's gonna put something up there. So I wanted to just throw some more information out here so we can make a good decision. I, I'm concerned about future of Pellet, just as everybody is that's in here, and I want you to know that we certainly enjoy living in Pellet, we owe the best for it. So I put together just a few slides here to, and, and don't get excited about the length of the agenda, 'cause it won't be that long. It won't take that much time. So first, first thing, the basic city responsibilities to the citizens are police, fire, ambulance, utilities, and streets. And everything beyond that, basic responsibility is something that the citizens have wanted and agreed to pay for. So, you know, the question I have is how are we doing with fulfilling these basic responsibilities? And you need to think about that. And the loss tax election of two, twenty twenty-two, the group that was objecting to this ballot language was concerned about one line out here, and that's the zero percent property tax relief right in here. In the prior loss tax setup, we had a twenty percent property tax relief. So what happened here when we voted for zero percent was that everybody in town got an increase in their property tax bill. And there was also two more opportunities to bid or to vote on this, both in the spring and the fall of twenty twenty-three, before the tax expired. So I just, the way I see it, I'm paying taxes, I'm, I'm a believer in this proverb here that each individual knows how to spend his own money better than the government does. So going forward, we saw this list of deficits from, at the last meeting, and, and yet, the thing I see in here is that we have approved to spend the money this way. It's been approved. And, and you can see down here in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, our general fund deficit was a half a million. It's projected to be a quarter of a million this year and more in the next fiscal year. I'm not sure that we can stand to add more deficit spending. So I won't read every one of these parameters. You've seen them earlier this evening. Three, four, and five, don't, they don't change. One and two, the number's been changed. And I have a, oh, problem with the seventeen million dollar bond issue against the loss tax, and that is right here, when you look at the loss tax that we expect to have come into this city this year, a million eight, half of it's nine eighteen, and, and the statement was made when this was passed, that fifty percent went to the rec center and fifty percent goes to the infrastructure of the city, which I think most of us will agree needs were. So nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars supports a bond of eleven million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The other cautionary thought I have on this bond is that we don't know what the state of Iowa's gonna do to the program, nor do we know what the economy's gonna do. Economy can go up and down. This revenue has, has historically gone up for the last ten, twelve years. History doesn't always repeat itself, you know? If you look at anybody that tells you what the market's gonna do, they always throw in that caveat, past performance is no guarantee of future performance. So we're, we're, there's a risk for everything. Next is Ballard King did do an operational plan in the, for us, it was about fifty-eight pages long, and on page thirty-three is this little paragraph here that says, "The population within the primary service area is such that it would not support an indoor recreation center without a larger secondary service area." Ballard King typically looks for a population of greater than fifty thousand within the primary service area. Primary service area is Pellet and about five miles around. Secondary service area exceeds this population, but here's a secondary service area which reaches into seven other counties. Because as you might know, Marion County only has thirty-three thousand people total, so we gotta go into other counties. Well, how many people are gonna come to us from Newton, for now? A ton was, a ton was in here, shares way down here in the corner in Pleasant Hill. You know, I, I've asked more than once, how many people are gonna participate? We need about at least fifteen hundred paying people to help get this going. So I'm just concerned about that. Even the next thing is we have, it's not like we have nothing else to do here. We have a water problem. I don't know how many of you know this, but we're living on one deep well. The other deep well produces material that won't go through the filter, it plugs up the filter rapidly. So we need to build a pretreatment plant for both wells, and we probably need to drill another well. Six to eight million dollars. We have lead pipe remediation problem, could be three to five million. The city will get to finance a lot of that as people pay us back, but we still have to come up with the money upfront. The ambulance deficit still rides around the six hundred to nine hundred thousand dollar mark, I believe, and we really need, we need to focus on getting the essential services passed next March. And that takes a sixty percent majority of all the people that vote. So we need to, we need to back that up. Our diesel plant, which is standby generators for when there's a big surge in demand for electricity, needs a software upgrade, and we're getting that software upgrade with Caterpillar, so we will begin, then begin their Caterpillar engines. The Caterpillar software would make us like every other cat diesel plant in the country, making it easier to get it fixed. That's gonna be a million plus. Airport runway improvements per year for five years, a million dollars. The airport brings a lot of money into the, into town. Talk about economic impact. They have a positive economic impact. Business district streets, I see the street from Broadway to First Street in front of our business district is, means replacing. It does not look, to me, it does not look Dutch, neat, you know? And I know my name is Butler, but I have Dutch ancestors. West Side Cypher Complex, we need to fix that. The lighter truck is coming in three years, there's two million dollars that's needed. Church's gonna be removed, what a break that is, that's a good deal. Two fifteen Main Street down here, Old Baby Fool, I think it is, or whatever it was, there was a daycare center. The building was given to us, but we gotta spend a million and a half dollars to make it usable for our purposes, if we decide. We gotta pay them, so you're there. Memorial Building needs some repair. Basic community center, I think the mayor referred to that, that if we don't do anything, we're gonna have to spend money there to make it insurable. And Orchard Street Tennis, pickleball courts have a million. We just need to take care of this stuff. I think, I think that we would be smart to be a pickleball center instead of a swim center, because pickleball people, the range of people that can play pickleball go up to past my age, and so, from young people. So in conclusion, I just think the citizens of Pellet need to take a look at the construct, cost of operating the rec center. Are they willing to pay a higher property taxes to operate? I don't see it ever breaking even. The citizens of Pellet want to commit seventy-three percent of the loss tax funds to the rec center, but the consideration that future revenue from the loss tax could go up and down depending on the state of Iowa legislation or other general economy, and this is such a big deal, I believe that the citizens should be, this should be submitted, the decision should be submitted to the citizens of Pellet in a referendum. And I don't know just how that could get structured, but I think it's important that the citizens learn all the facts and make the decision, because we're gonna be paying for it forever. So those are, that's, those are the things I think about when I see this. It would be great if I, if I support anything in this project that's fortunate in any sense. And then I hear Pellet Rec Center is gonna close because... And then I hear Pella Rec Center is going to close because they don't want to run a rec center. We know, maybe we should think about buying those gyms. We need gyms. So if we build four and they close two, we haven't that game of two, about two. Anyway, thanks for listening, and if you want a copy of this, we'll have a copy on the way out door, so. And if you need to call me, uh, I'm, I'm on the list. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Good presentation, well thought out. I, I have a rebuttal for everything you said, and I would love to have that conversation, but tonight's not the night. Uh, we will have ample opportunity to have those discussions. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the time to put it together. All right, we'll go back to our agenda. Let's see. Were we just doing the resolution? Or we did that? Did we do the resolution for the, for the demolition? That we closed the session? Okay. So we'll move to resolution number six, seven, eight, or sixty-seven eighty-five, entitled Resolution Approving Plan Specifications Form of Contract: Estimate of Cost Receiving, Bids, and Making Award Contract for the six oh nine East First Street Building Demolition Project. Assume there's nothing to add. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Ben Strylan, DeYoung. Any discussion? Hey, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Ben Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Belver.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving to public hearing on rezoning application from Pella Partners for parcels one seven four zero five zero one seven zero zero and one seven four zero five zero one six zero zero from agricultural A one to two-family residential R two. Mike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain the site. The mayor of Ward stated we're not any rezoning request from Pella Partners LLC. This for thirty-four acres of property is still oriented toward highway one sixty-three associated right here. The parcel that we're talking about is this yellow highlighted area right over here. Here you go down further on the map, you see the boss lawn and the development is located right over here. Now, what's being proposed this evening is a change in zoning that is from A, A one to A to R two, and when R two is, is two-family residential, or this is also what the developers planning to do is building a single-family and a two-family homes on the parcel. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned, in the line of the comprehensive plan, one of the items to keep in mind with the comp plan is that the comp plan identified strategic priorities, additional housing in the community. We've also had a recent housing assessment by Marion County, which identified thirteen additional housing, thirteen hundred, excuse me, additional housing units that would need to be built in Pella to meet demand through the year twenty thirty-five. Both housing is a key feature priority in the comprehensive plan. We also believe that the location, you can see here, is low-density residential, but the developer, if they build two-family homes on the lot, we feel that that still would need, needs, or identify these density requirements in the comprehensive plan, is low-density residential on this. So staff believes that the comp, the rezoning request actually aligns with the city's comprehensive plan as well. I mean, the zoning commission reviewed this after November twenty-fifth meeting, unanimously approved this request. So we are recommending approval this evening, Mr. Mayor. We'll be happy to be answering questions. The council may have on the side.
All right, thank you. Mike, any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Counsel, comments?
I'm amazed at how long this parcel has gone undeveloped.
Any other things, counsel? Any member of the public want to comment on this? If so, please come to my phone. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. DeYoung, Carl Stone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Stay.
Ben Strylan.
Yes.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Belver.
Yes.
Okay, moving to ordinance number ten, one zero five six, entitled Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by amending the boundaries of the R two district to include the property generally located west and northwest of the intersection of Burke Circle and Idaho Drive in Pella, Iowa, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map. This is the first reading. Assume there's nothing to add. Uh, motion, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For Brandon Horace, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Belver.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Stay.
Ben Strylan.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to public hearing on rezoning application from Mark Vanadore for south and east of seventeen thirteen Fivefield Road and south of sixteen oh nine Fivefield Road from agriculture, A one to limited light industrial M one. Mike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor Ward stated, nice application from Mr. Vanadore, and his for parcel with five five acres that's located itself in Fifty Road. So it's this highlighted area that we have, very black highlighted area that's being requested to be rezoned, specifically with Mr. Vanadore saying the application is to rezone property from A one A to limited light industrial. Best way to explain this rezoning application is to look at the zoning, the current zoning map here. What you'll see is this is the parcel right here, M one Limited Light Industrial, plus this parcel, and we believe also would be like the future use land map of the comprehensive plan in the lines. This is identified as general industrial as well. So from a comprehensive plan standpoint, in line with the city's comprehensive plan, is also limited light industrial, alpha Fivefield Road, and plus this property as well. So staff's recommendation is approval this evening. I mean, the zoning commission actually reviewed this application after November twenty-fifth meeting, unanimously passed this request as well.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any written comments received?
No written comments.
Comments from counsel?
Denny, back there yet? Okay. I was, I was wondering how he's going to get access to this.
Yeah, that was my question. I actually just looked at it. It looks like the parcel in front of it, he also owns.
Oh, okay.
And it's already zoned that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, counsel? Any member of the audience have a comment on this subject? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
For Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ben Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Belver.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number ten fifty-seven, entitled Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by amending the boundaries of the M one district to include the property generally located to the south and east of the seven, of seventeen thirteen Fivefield Road and south of sixteen oh nine Fivefield Road in Pella, Iowa, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map in this first reading. Assume nothing to add, so can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Ben Strylan, Brandon Horace, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Ben Strylan.
Yes.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Belver.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to public hearing on rezoning application from Jeff Dingeman for parcel one four five five two zero zero two five five from agricultural A one to two-family residential R two. Mike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, we have the plan in sight, and we have one presentation for the following two ordinance that we are considering this evening, and both of these have come from Mr. Dingeman this evening. And specifically for both of these parcels, we are recommending an additional rezoning from the parcels. And as Mayor Ward stated, for both of these parcels, we're looking at switching the zoning or changing the zoning jurisdiction from A one A to two-family residential, and then R three, anytime you hear that, what that means is multifamily housing. And generally, when we talk about multifamily housing for R three, that's about twenty-one units per acre, so maximum zoning density for the R three district on this as well. Once again, when we look at the city's comprehensive plan, before we get to the future use land map and explaining where housing is needed in the city of Pella, same issue that we have, we have an additional identified being of thirteen hundred additional housing units that would need to be built within our community to support the housing needs through the year twenty thirty-five. So let's go ahead, Mandy, before we go back, because you could go back right on, throw your hand out here, but according to everyone here, this is at, this is watching, right down here. The yellow highlighted area is located right here, Mr. Dingeman's industrial development is located right here in the red highlighted area, this yellow highlighted area that we're talking about. Let's go ahead, Mandy. Now, we believe that the development, the rezoning application this evening aligns with the city's comprehensive plan from Mr. Dingeman, but the reason for the conditional rezoning request, or intervention with this, with this ordinance, is currently, when you look at development on the western side of our community, a large portion of that western side of the community is in the service provider, the Iowa Regional Utilities Association. So it's a separate water provider from the city of Pella. And if we're to look at additional housing and development on the western side of the community, we believe that there's a need of enhanced fire flow on the western side of the community to accommodate additional development. So when we talk about a large area like this and potential R two and R three and additional housing, we'd want to make sure that we have additional fire flows, at least count before the planning process. Now, R U A has been really good work, but they're currently evaluating sites on the western side of our community for water tower on this as well. But our thoughts are, is if we go through the development process, what we have in the next is the plating process. So with the conditional rezoning requests this evening, if Mr. Dingeman would have twelve months from approval of the rezoning application to submit a final plan to the city council, then our thoughts would be, is typically, we evaluate fire flows through new subdivisions on this, so this gets to the plating process. We'd evaluate whether there's sufficient water fire flows to support future development on this site. That would be determined during the subdivision process. In that process, we typically take about twelve months, so we'll go more than twelve months on this. But if we don't have a final plan within twelve months, or that development doesn't proceed because of the fire flow, or no additional fire flows at least planned for the area, then the zoning property, we're back, we're back to A one A on it as well. So is there any questions on the conditional zoning aspect of this application? But overall, I would make clear, with support of, of the development, the rezoning application, more just an infrastructure need and planning for the water service provider in the area as well. And I'd leave the plating and zoning for the interview this after November twenty-fifth meeting, and actually unanimously approve this request as well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any written comments?
No written comments.
Counsel, comments, questions? Any member of the audience want to speak to this issue? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Other.
DeYoung, Carl Stone, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ben Strylan.
Yes.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Belver.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number ten fifty-eight, entitled an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by conditionally amending the boundaries of the R two district to include the property generally located at the eastern portion of the parcel north of the northern terminus of West Twelfth Street in Pella, Iowa, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map. This is the first reading. Assume nothing to add, so I'll entertain a motion for approval. So, for Hopkins, Carl Stone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Ben Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Belver.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to a public hearing on rezoning application from Jeff Dingeman for parcel one four five five two zero zero two five five from agriculture A one to multifamily residential R three. Mike?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, it was the same presentation we just gave. This is the R three component. Jerry helped me out on here, but looking at the map, the R three, I believe, this is a larger parcel right here than R two, that's a good, that we just recently increased first reading on. The same conditions, same recommendations from city administration on this conditional rezoning due to, we want to make sure we understand the plans for R U A as far as the new water tower for our community as well. And we think that should be determined within the next twelve months as well, and that's the reason for the conditional recommendations this evening.
Any written comments?
No written comments.
Counsel comments? Public comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Hopkins, Ben Strylan, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ben Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Belver.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number ten five, ten fifty-nine, entitled an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by conditionally amending the boundaries of the R three district to include the property generally located at the western portion of the parcel north of the northern terminus of West Twelfth Street in Pella, Iowa, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map reading. Assume there's nothing to add, so I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
For Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussion?
Can you get more words in there?
I'm gonna have to get another bottle. Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ben Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Belver.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Motion passed. And you do realize we're only about halfway there. Okay, moving on to a public hearing on rezoning application from Pella Regional Health Center for properties located on the south side of Monroe Street between Main Street and Birch Drive for medium, medium-density, single-family residential R one B to institutional INS. Mike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for discussing rezoning application for Pella Regional Health Center. Mayor Ward stated, it's probably an acre and a half of property that they have, is a place in Monroe Street. The area that we're talking about is an area located right here on Monroe Street. And Monroe Street is just, you know, for this, Pella Regional, you can see their facilities are located down here. Part of the rezoning application, they did submit an expansion or concept plan as well, but we also had to figure it out on the big board as well. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please, on this. Now, when we look at the current low-density city residential, and actually look at the city's comprehensive plan, and find the best guide on this, with the facility and the campus, if you, if you were looking at this parcel, the rest of the campus of Pella Regional is only institutional. And so this parcel right here is identified as institutional zoning, or medical and assisted living in the city's comprehensive plan. So when we look at this from the comprehensive plan standpoint, future use land map, it aligns with the city's future land map, and we also believe as far as the, any type of, like saying land use conflicts with the low-density residential property owners that advise around the development audit as well, that conflict curve exists with Pella Regional. We believe that's something that could be mitigated during the site planning process. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval this evening for this rezoning request. It's important, though, I mean, the zoning commission unanimously approved this request after November twenty-fifth meeting as well.
All right, thank you, Mike. I believe we did receive one written, or two written comments. Oh, yeah, it's two.
Both are in the packet.
They were in the packet, yeah. All right, counsel, any comments?
The other three properties there over the birch, they're already, they're already INS. You see that, those three boxes to the right of the red line, those three, yeah.
Right here.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I see why they want to do this, but on the horizon, I see another fight over traffic on Monroe Street. I don't know what they plan to do, but it's kind of like a train down the tracks.
Okay, counsel, anything else? All right, anyone from the public wish to comment about this?
My name is Kristy Van Zee. My husband and I live at five oh four Monroe Street. We also own the vacant lot next to us. According to the news tonight, you are going to vote on two quality-of-life facilities According to the news tonight, you are going to vote on two quality-of-life facilities in Pella. I'm hearing, I'm here to encourage you to vote yes for the rezoning request from the most important quality-of-life facility in Pella, the Pella Regional Health Center. When we draw people to Pella with new recreation facilities, it is very important to support the growth of our community with a good medical facility. The two go hand in hand. It's not about taking away housing or to ride a parking lots or the construction traffic or maybe too busy on Monroe Street. It is about great medical facilities in our community. Someone said, "You have a bird's eye view," and yes, we do. And our hearing has not gone bad either, so we hear a lot of construction traffic. Construction is never fun, but it's not about us, it's about the community. We appreciate, we appreciate the open communications from Pella Regional Health Center and their willingness to share contact information with us. We encourage you as a council to support this rezoning request and any further requests for the expansion of Pella Regional Health Center. There are a couple of other ways to support the medical care in Pella. One, sufficient ambulance services. Many of you received a letter from me some time ago about an ambulance transfer experience my friend and I had. I'm not going to get into that again. I'm just going to say, "I'm tired of fingers being pointed, I just want the problem fixed." And you know, sometimes it's not about cost, sometimes it's about care. A second way to support the medical care in Pella is to fix the streets going to the medical facility. Over the years, we have written letters concerning one of the main streets going to the medical clinic. Birch Street has needed major construction for the last number of years. It is a shame that our citizens and our visitors from out of town need to experience such a ridiculous roller coaster ride to get to the medical appointments. This street has no curbs left anymore. In the past few summers, I've had to weed whack the weeds out of the street just to keep our property looking good. Keep an eye on Monroe Street as well. Thank you.
What's that little orange area?
Any, anyone else?
That little orange area there, they did, what's it, um?
Jerry, what's the zoning on that?
That orange area that just would be, we call it medium-density residential. So I would assume the vision was that some form of high-density apartment or housing to support the hospital use. This was decided years ago by the council.
Okay, anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Hopkins.
Support.
Brandon Horace, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. So moving to the ordinance number 1060, entitled an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Pella, Iowa by amending the boundaries of the institutional district to include the property generally located at 511 Monroe Street, 517 Monroe Street, 603 Monroe Street, 607 Monroe Street, 611 Monroe Street, 615 Monroe Street, and the vacated portion of Orchard Drive between 517 Monroe Street and 603 Monroe Street in Pella, Iowa, and directing the zoning administrator to change the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map. This is the first reading. Nothing to add, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Brandon Horace DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Stan.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, a public hearing on rezoning application from ATI Group for property located between Oskaloosa Street, Eagle Lane, and Roosevelt Road from Community Commercial CC to Limited Life Industrial M1. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, as we happily explain the site, and as Mayor Ward stated, the ATI Group has submitted a rezoning application for this highlighted parcel that we have down here. The rezoning application this evening is from community commercial to limited life industrial. It is oriented more towards who is located right over here, Polk Christian Grace School is located right over here. So looking at this, the easiest way to explain this request is this is the current zoning map that we have up here. Everything you see in red is actually community commercial, but you see kind of the community area is the limited life industrial. From a zoning standpoint, looking at this, limited life industrial, that's the bottom of the audit. And we also believe the rezoning application actually aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. But in a preface, I comment, plan was done in 2014, and Mandy, we can go ahead, please. I think we have a copy of the comprehensive plan. As you can see, it's kind of a hodge, not a hodgepodge, but they had various uses that were planned for this parcel back in 2014. It's been redeveloped and counseled previously, rezoned parcel for the new industrial development that's going in on the complexes. And we're also taking into consideration council's previous action on this with it. We believe that this does align with the city's comprehensive plan. It is important to note that the planning and zoning commission approved this request after November 25th meeting. And developer is, it is important also to note that this is conditional upon a five survey being issued within six months for this. And I believe that's just to make sure the zoning lines for the whole parcel on it as well. To find, Mr. Mayor, that in this requesting waiver, the second and third readings of the proposal ordinance this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any written comments?
Your written comment was from the applicant requesting waiver.
Counsel, any comments? Anyone in the public comment on this? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. DeYoung, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1061, entitled an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Pella, Iowa by conditionally amending the boundaries of the M1 district to include the property generally located between Oskaloosa Street, Eagle Lane, and Roosevelt Road in Pella, Iowa. 50219, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map. First reading. If nothing to add, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
For Brandon Horace DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Brandon Horace?
Second and third.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second and third.
Second and third. Sorry.
Okay. Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. I need a motion for adoption of ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Court. Thank you. Brandon Horace and Straylon, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to public hearing regarding adoption of the 2021 edition of the International Building Code. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, it's important to note that this presentation is for the next three ordinances on the agenda. The public hearing is on the agenda this evening. And basically, we want to make sure everyone, even though we have a brief presentation this evening, we also talked at this at our last policy and planning session as far as updating the city building codes. And basically what's being proposed, this is update the current codes from the 2015 version that we have up to the 2021 version that we have for both the residential portion of building codes, 2020 for the national electrical code. And council order to approve these ordinances because we actually take care of them in 2025, so it'd be ready for construction season 2025. And one of the questions that we have about it, DeYoung asked, is what is the cost of compliance by adopting these new codes? Based off our research that we were able to find, the average cost of a new home would increase in cost by about $2,000 by adopting these codes, and it's mainly due to requirements that follow the new code, codes for ground fault and interruptors or GFI requirements for the code. It is important to note that offsetting this is these are safety enhancements as well, which could offset the additional costs as well. And, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval of three codes this evening. If you want to happy answer some questions, counsel may have on the side of these items.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any written comments?
No written comments.
Comments, counsel? Any member of the audience comment on this? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Dan Straylon, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to ordinance number 1062, entitled an ordinance amending the city code of the city of Pella, Iowa by repealing chapter 158 Building Code and in lieu thereof, adopting the 2021 edition of the International Building Code. First reading, nothing to add, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
For Hopkins, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules, waiving second and third reading and placing on the third and final reading.
Brandon Horace? Support. Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
For Brandon Horace and Straylon, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Public hearing regarding adoption of the 2021 edition of the International Residential Code. I think you said there would be nothing to add. Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Counsel, any comments?
So we're, we're eliminating the 2015 code in 2024, and we're instating the 2021 code in '25.
That is correct. I know that seems a little...
Just wanted to be clear, make sure that we're on the same page.
Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason for that is when these building codes come out, and I'm not sure what the latest version is either, 2023 or so, but the issue in adopting these codes that come out every two to three years is usually it takes everyone a while to adopt the latest version of the code to realize the compliance issues and amendments. And so by adopting them, giving them about three years, we let everyone else work out the problems and the issues, and we adopt their amended codes, so it's a little bit more efficient process for us. And that's the reason why, why these are waiting.
That is absolutely a correct assessment. We wait three years, then the bugs, we get ironed out, and then we adopt a solved code, and that we will have issues with it. So we will continue to have process down, bro. It's just another process.
Okay, anything else, counsel? Any comment from a member of the audience? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Hopkins, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to ordinance number 1063, entitled an ordinance amending the city code of the city of Pella by repealing chapter 157 Residential Code and in lieu thereof, adopting the 2021 edition of the International Residential Code. First reading, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support. Hopkins, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules, waiving second and third reading and placing on final reading.
For Brandon Horace, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Brandon Horace? Support. Dan Straylon, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Was that 1064? Mandy, was that 1064?
That was 1063. One more.
One more. All right, the one we've been looking for, the last one. Go to public hearing regarding adoption of the 2020 edition of the National Electric Code. Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Counsel, comments? Member of the audience, any comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Hopkins, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Ray Horace.
Yes.
Fother.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to ordinance number 1064, entitled an ordinance amending the city code of the city of Pella by repealing sections 159.01 and 159.02 of chapter 159 Electric Code of chapter 159 electric code and in lieu thereof adopting the 2020 edition of the national electric code, also known as the National Fire Protection Act 70 with certain revisions. First reading, any motion for approval?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Strylan Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Bill Strylan.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brander Horst.
Yes.
Feltler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules, waiving second and third reading and placing on third and final reading.
Brander Horst, Mr. Strylan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brander Horst.
Yes.
Bill Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Feltler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Strylan.
Support.
Brander Horst. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Bill Strylan.
Yes.
Brander Horst.
Yes.
Feltler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1054 entitled in ordinance amending sections 165.13.5.2 and 165.13.5.5 of the city code of the city of Pella, Iowa, for the purpose of updating state agency information and amending approval criteria for historical district overlay zone review. This is the second reading. Mike?
I guess Mr. Mayor will be happy to explain the side of this. Counsel is aware we've talked about this request to become a certified local government and the benefits of doing so since the spring of last year. Only requirement is to be a certified local government. There has to be clarity on your historic districts and design standards that someone would build a new home in those districts. And specifically what the state wants to have is one design standard, which would be the Secretary of Interior standards for renovation. And those would be the design standards our Historic Preservation Commission would use for new homes. Those have always been in our ordinance with that, but we've made distinctions on between contributing structures have always been under those requirements. Non-contributing structures have defaulted to the Dutch residential design review district guidelines as well. What this amendment to this ordinance does is amend it so everything, all structures, all the law could be under the Department of Interior designs. In conversations with Historic Preservation Commission, they feel those design standards are flexible enough to accommodate all variety of homes within the district. So we don't believe this will be an interior change from the standpoint. I do want to make mention that we did have one additional change and we are also just at clarity that that's the intent of the ordinance. We are striking the word purity. And with this specific authority, I'm going to default on what counsel need to do to make this additional change. So I'm willing.
So as I understand it, we have described this here in the initial first reading, and so in order to fix that and remove that contributing word, word contributing from that first sentence, we first need a motion to amend if counsel is supportive of that change. And then once that amendment has been made, we can do the second reading, approval of the second reading. Do you have any questions and any questions?
Did I understand that? So we need to amend this ordinance language first and then... So do I have a motion for the amendment?
So moved. Support.
Carlstone Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? I'm sorry, Mandy, call the roll.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Bill Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brander Horst.
Yes.
Feltler.
Yes.
Motion passed. So now I need a motion for approval of the amended ordinance.
So moved. Support.
DeYoung Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Bill Strylan.
Yes.
Brander Horst.
Yes.
Feltler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Am I doing it again?
Yeah.
Sorry.
If you don't.
No, I do not mind. Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Support.
Brander Horst Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brander Horst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Bill Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Feltler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Support.
That Hopkins and Mr. Strylan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Bill Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brander Horst.
Yes.
Feltler.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1055 entitled in ordinance amending municipal telecommunications utility rates in the city of Pella, Iowa. This is the second reading.
I guess Mr. Mayor would be happy to explain the side of this. Mayor Ward stated this would be for our television customers for tele TV and explained the side of, we serve our first television customer in 2021. We have not increased rates in Pella fiber since exception of the utility. And since that time, we've had a drastic increase in programming costs. In fact, the increases that we're talking about this evening that you see in the chart are discovering the programming costs have been experienced by Pella fiber since offering television services. So this would be the content for our cable packages. This would be the forwarding national cable and television stations that we carry on Pella fiber along with the Des Moines market, the Des Moines what's commonly referred to as the local channels, and we third around the 39 of those as well. So everything that we have as far as an increase is actually going to the content providers that we propose this evening. So that would keep the city whole, all the content providers that we have. Now, we have discussed this previously with counsel and as a result, this in order that we have to ensure adequate time for our customers, we are requesting waiver of the third reading this evening as well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung Brander Horst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brander Horst.
Yes.
Feltler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Bill Strylan.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Support.
Brander Horst, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brander Horst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Feltler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Bill Strylan.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Brander Horst, Mr. Strylan, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. I'm sorry, Mandy, please call the roll.
Brander Horst.
Yes.
Bill Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Feltler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I get a motion for approval of abstract of bills number 2165?
Move to approve initial warrants.
Support.
Brander Horst, DeYoung, any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brander Horst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Feltler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Bill Strylan.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you'd like to address this evening? Any member in the public have any other business you'd like to address counsel with this evening? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we're going to adjourn to a policy and planning to discuss the Pella Dog Park agreement. Mike?
I guess Mr. Mayor would have to explain the side of this. Specifically, what we're looking for tonight is a direction on whether to proceed with the proposed partnership agreement with the Pella Dog Park Association. Now, if you recall, we were talking about this earlier with the city council and council instructed staff to consider formal consideration of the agreement. We were instructed to develop a partnership agreement that we are considering this evening, and we have some great highlights of the main provisions of the agreement. Now, first of all, when we talked about the Pella Dog Park, the close location was actually located in North Kailwater Down at Lake Red Rock Campgrounds. And that was here. It is located in this overall design layout. It's been done on a preliminary basis of this for the project. So Mandy, let's go ahead with the terms of the agreement, and these are very high level with the main term of the agreement. So this evening, what we are considering for this as far as the draft agreement is the agreement would be additional upon the city of improving the land lease for 20 or 10 or 20 years. Army Corps of Engineers, we haven't been having negotiations with the Corps of Engineers yet on this project and it's subject to approval of the Army Corps of Engineers and land lease for the site. It is important to note that the improvements that would be constructed would be only maintained by the city of Pella. Equally important to note, the Pella Dog Park Association, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the city of Pella would be responsible for reviewing and improving the project design plans. Now, as far as the estimated cost of after the project phase, one of the projects is to shy of $169,000. The city's contribution to phase one of the project would be tapped at $87,000. The Pella Dog Park Association would be responsible for all costs above that for phase one of the project. Now, throughout the agreement, you can see as we talk about this, like all our partnership agreements, the wonders to be in agreement as well with it. What we have here is the Pella Dog Park Association would be supporting the project during the length of the agreement, and they have pledged to have all of their time to help support the operations of the agreement. The Army Corps of Engineers has also graciously offered assistance in maintaining the project as well, and the city of Pella fits into this. So what we have is a long-term agreement that would be based on support of the Pella Dog Park in future years as well. Now, it is important to note, we've had communications with the Dog Park Association. They may cease to exist as a corporate entity in the future as well, but they pledge their support to continue to support the project for the city of Pella. And if that should then occur and we find operational issues on it, we also have a provision that the city council would have the right to cease the project at that time if that were to occur, if it ceased to exist as a corporate entity or no longer able to support the project. From a staff standpoint, the corporate entity is not such a big deal, but the support of the project and assisting with the project through the term of the agreement, that's more probably a material item, and it's simply just because of future operational costs to maintain Dog Park. So with that, Mandy, is there anything else? Now, as far as the project timeline, the council directed us to proceed with formal consideration of the agreement. This agreement will be backed on the agenda for January 7th on this, and we'll also commence negotiations with the Army Corps of Engineers and the land lease on the site. It is important to note, both staff and city attorney have reviewed the agreement. And Mr. Mayor, we're here to see the direction of this, whether to proceed with formal consideration of the proposed partnership agreement with the Pella Dog Park Association.
Okay.
And I believe we have members of the Dog Park Association and the succeeding to answer any questions that the council may have upon us as well. And we also have representatives from the Army Corps of Engineers and the succeeding as well.
Okay, thanks, Mike. From the head of orders of Dave Hopkins, yes?
Yep.
Anybody feel we should move forward? It's a long, long time coming. Let's move this project, get a clear message.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, move on to Pella Regional Health Center transport agreement.
What we have this evening, Mr. Mayor, is to talk about that outline, the direction services that Pella ambulance probably provides to the Pella Regional Health Center. Council mayor may not be elected, council is aware. For those in the audience, transport services are an essential service on the Pella Regional Health Center. They depend on the public meeting ambulance to perform those. When we talk about transport services generally in the years past, it's been somewhere between four to 500 service runs. This past year, the last fiscal year that we had essentially 380 service runs. The issue for the city when we talk about transport services is it's a little different than 911s have to call. This is an inner facility transport that we're making from Pella Regional to another hospital, oftentimes it's in the Des Moines area or it could be in the Iowa City area. So when you look at the runs that happens from the ambulance, Des Moines is somewhere between 45 to 55 miles one way on it. Iowa City is even longer than that, and then Iowa City trip, you could talk about whether it's Des Moines or Iowa City, you're taking a long period of time, a long period of time or living in ambulance service. Key issue that we've had and the reason why the transport calls decreased over this last year is if you look at, we've made more trips to the Iowa City area, and then also we've had an increase in 911 calls for the community as well. So that's really our first primary duty is the 911 calls. So we've had denies in transport services or requests from Pella Regional Health Center. There's also badly branded to a few staffing shortages at the Pella Community Ambulance as well. So overall, what we have is an agreement this evening, and we talked a lot about the ambulance, and I want to make sure from city administration standpoint that we're all clear. The ambulance provides an excellent service, and we really look at this as three years ago, when we were faced with the ambulance decision, if the city didn't take over the ambulance, there wasn't another party willing to provide ambulance services for the city. So I believe it still do this day. Council made the right decision with it, stand by it. But equally important is it's always been a realization that the ambulance providing service to other parties outside of the city of Pella. The townships that surround the city of Pella, Pella Regional Health Center. And we've always had this issue as defining what is the service territory of the ambulance, what is the services of the ambulance, and those that receive benefits from the ambulance paying the cost of the ambulance service. We feel that we've struck a fair and equitable agreement tonight with the Pella Regional Health Center. This is the terms that we have, and we're going to schedule, and council directs us this evening, we'll schedule a formal consideration to occur on January 7th. But what we have briefly outlining this is parties look at this, and this is new, and the hospital would be financially contributing to the ambulance. Is it, we would have a one-year agreement, and as we've talked about with the hospital, if we're this time next year or long before this, there's a very good chance the agreement would have to be renewed. But during that time, hopefully we'd have some clarity on where we stand with these central services tax. Hopefully, we have some clarity on other parties that receive benefits from the ambulance that are firmly not contributing from a government standpoint towards the operating subsidy, and that would be mainly the townships that apply to Pella as well. So with that, in the end, we'll sort of the one-year agreement, see if there's additional revenue from other parties. Once we know those facts, we'll be able to renegotiate a further agreement beyond this one year. But anyway, the key items that we have is the transport would be limited for weekdays from Monday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And what the city is saying is in exchange for the financial contributions, we can do two transports at one time from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. To get outside those hours, we're going to be limited to performing one transport at a time. And if you think about it from the ambulance standpoint, you have a transport setting, a patient, Iowa City is a big deal, it takes a long time to get there, taking an ambulance on service. And what's been happening, what's been trying on staff is when we take the ambulance on service, oftentimes we have a whole vacancy over from 911 calls, we end up calling in people, becoming, oftentimes it's our full-time employees, becoming cover shifts on it as well. So that's why the financial contribution is key in this agreement. And equally important to note, to provide those transport services to Pella Regional Health Center, they've agreed to coordinate prioritizes those transport needs. And so instead of having three parties for three segments, a hospital requesting transport services from the city, we'll hopefully have one voice, so they'll be able to prioritize this and tell us what the highest priorities are for the transport services, and that's going to be in agreement as well. Now, in exchange, it's also important to note, there's going to be times next year, if we approve this agreement, that we're not going to be able to perform the transport services just because of 911 calls. In those cases, what we're stating through the agreement is that we're going to document those and provide reasons for the Pella Regional Health Center on that. Now, in exchange for performing the transport services, which Pella Regional considers essential to their operations, what they've offered pays $350,000 to the city of Pella. We feel from the staffing standpoint that in order to provide this level of transport services to the hospital, on it, we're going to need to have four full-time employees, and it would be being proposed by the ambulance on this. And so with Pella Regional, they want to make sure when they pay the funds to the city, that those employees can add it to the city's payroll on it as well. So their payment is subject to city hiring for full-time paramedics. In addition, when you look at it from the ambulance standpoint, we currently have three ambulances. With our ambulance, we replace one, we have another ambulance that's scheduled, actually one to go into the operation. We have another ambulance scheduled to be replaced this year, and the third ambulance has some miles on it. What happens when you do 911 services is those ambulances sometimes need maintenance on it. So we talk about providing transport services, providing, especially if you're a city, oftentimes we can be running short on ambulances depending if they're all operational or not. So what we have in our agreement is that we would provide, we would purchase a transit ambulance as well. We'll explain that during this again. But Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Let's talk about the financial overview. Where we're at right now with ambulance is if you really look at it, it's operational revenue. What that is, is that's the revenue mainly, and that comes from patients on this as well. But the patient revenue is, I'm doing the math in my head, about $770,000 a year. We have a grant from the federal government that covers about $75,000 for served Medicaid pages. So that's how we get up to the $850,000. Our current operating costs are at $1,878,000, which means we have net financial contribution from the city's general fund of just over a million dollars. And we talked a lot about budgets and on items, and that what I would say equally important to know, when we talk about budgets, yes, we have to, we have to get this issue corrected. But equally important to know, through this process, we need to define the service territory for the ambulance, we need to define the service levels. And for those parties that are benefiting from the ambulance, eventually they're going to have to pay for the services on it as well. And the key point of that is what is the timeline, and what is the transition, and what's the agreement? All of this is in work, and it's in the work on it. But right now, where we're at is we're at about a million dollar contribution from the city's general fund. If you were to look at our budget on this, our budget for this current year is about $600,000 we have to contribute. We've been hard at work at reducing this. We feel that if we do have a budget deficit this year, that that budget deficit will be about $253,000. So while we still have this need of the ambulance, we've made some progress within the city to help reduce its costs. Now, with the agreement that we're proposing this evening, if you look at it from an operational standpoint, taking Pella Regional's, it's essentially $350,000. The cost to those employees is about $330,000. Now, when we look at adding those four time employees, we believe that we're going to be able to reduce the number of hours where we're like on part-time employees. And we believe by having the four additional employees, that we're actually going to be able to reduce overtime for the ambulance as well. So if you look at that, when we add in Pella Regional's payment, plus if you were to look at amortizing the payment for that ambulance over seven years, that's $35,000. We have a slight, what we would consider an operational debt decrease of $990,000 for the ambulance on this as well, based off our actual calculations. Now, with this, it's also important to note, if we get back up to performing transports of four to 500 per year, there's a chance we end up with the four additional employees, and this deficit would be further reduced for the ambulance as well. So I know that was a lot to cover on this. Before we go over to final summary, is there any questions on the financial aspect of what's being proposed? Okay, what we have, and we're looking for direction on this, the cycle will be considered on January 7th. But remember, it's the hospital and also the wholeness that is critical, and the city continues to provide transport services, and they've been a very good partner to work from that standpoint. And I guess with city administration's standpoint, we're happy that they're financially willing to assist the city on this matter. But the key item that we have is we're facing this leaving the back of this for medical reasons to some of our full-time staff. And that could impair our ability to perform transport services absent adding additional staff to help with this. So the options that we have this evening is, option number one that we have direction this evening is we would actually be getting hiring for additional staff, and we actually secure the ambulance on this. Finding ambulances is fairly difficult. There's one provider that has a transport ambulance that is available that they can have in two weeks. So we would purchase the ambulance, and we'd go hire the staff. On January 7th, council would consider the formal agreement that we would have with the... On January 7th, council would consider it a formal agreement that we would have with the Pella Regional Health Center. It would be doing things in advance of the agreement. We see those in the city administration side and many things. Mayor Ward has been involved in these discussions as well. We feel we have a good relationship with Pella Regional and we also feel that it's essential, from Pella Regional's standpoint, it's essential that the service continues. So option number one, we would make commitments, financial commitments before council considered a formal agreement. Option number two is just wait till January 7th till you have a formal agreement, make sure that you have everything documented. Then if it's approved, we would hire the employees in the ambulances that evening. The issue with that is, is getting up to that point, we may have to further restrict grants for it just to get up to that point as to what's impending as far as the leads that we have with our full-time employees. Option number three is potentially to take a look at that fee and the council feels that it's inadequate for what's the service level that's being proposed. We'd need to renegotiate a higher view from Pella Regional. We haven't gone down that path to get to this point. It is taking some time with the hospital. It's not that it's been difficult. But despite everything, right now, they're pressed financially as well and we feel that what's being offered, being proposed by them is, is very exchange for the services being rendered. And also if you look at it from the city standpoint, if we're not mandated on a specific number of transports, we could actually simply document that we're unable to perform a transport service. Option number four would be any other option that's not listed above, including ceasing transport services. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we're looking for council direction of these four options that we have this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. As Mike said, I've been involved in some discussions. I think we've negotiated with the hospital. Negotiations have been good. I, I would advocate that we do option one for two reasons. There's an ambulance available that we can get in two weeks and I was told today that the four staff members that are available are still available. So we can be able to hire them now. I think it would be a good time to do it.
Yes.
That's my opinion.
Governor, you agree?
Number one.
Come on, roll. And it actually does reduce our, this current year's deficit a little bit. Obviously, there's got to be a lot, a lot of long-term discussion with the ambulance, but I think this is a great option right now. So if there's a, let's move on. Okay, city administration, project updates? Do you have any updates for us?
Nothing I haven't heard from before. January, a little busy month as well. A lot of these items that we see here will be on the month of January as well. And Mr. Mayor, we'd be happy to answer any questions on any of the projects listed on the board, on the debate board, along with any other projects council may have questions on.
Anybody want to discuss any of these? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Hopkins, Phil Strylan, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Mandy called.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Phil Strylan?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Felber?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Thank you.